I'd like to call the April 8, 2019, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Matthews to order. Let's start out with a safety minute. Not a lot of people in the room this evening, but if we do have to, well, I take that back. There's a crowd coming in now. But if we do have to evacuate, we go out these doors in the back. To the right is a stairwell that leads out to the front of the building. We would then move out into the green area out in front of the building. If you go out and go to the left, there's a back stairwell, takes you down to the back parking lot, and move to the back of that parking lot if we need to evacuate. The defibrillator is in place and is to the right of the reception desk out front, and we would call 911 from any cell phones, or if you're using a town phone, it's 911. You do not have to dial a number before that. So with that, I'll turn to Commissioner Miller for tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us bow our heads in prayer, please. Dear God, we thank you for our civil liberties and freedom, for our privileges and our opportunities. You have said that where two or more are gathered in your name, that you will be with them. We ask you to be with us tonight. Bless us and provide guidance to the Matthews Town Council. We want to do a good job with the business brought before us tonight, and we want to prove worthy of the confidence placed in us by our fellow citizens. May we be honest in our actions, make the best decisions, not only for today, but for years to come. Also keep watch over the men and women in the military, police, and fire departments as they serve and protect. Amen.
Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, I'll turn to the manager. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda at this time?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is introduction of our retired police K-9 caster. Is he here? And Officer Osich.
He's got that call.
Kevin, are you?
Mr. Mayor, Board, just want to introduce to you our retiring K-9 caster and his handler, Kevin Osich. Kevin Osich is a 24-year veteran of law enforcement, 19 with the town, and he's been a K-9 officer for 14 years. K-9 caster's been with us since October 31 of 2011. He has multiple seizures. We're talking, when I say seizures, I'm talking about drug seizures. He is a dual-purpose trained dog.[218.73][218.73](Laughter). He is a dual-purpose trained dog, which means he is not only trained for narcotic detection, but he's also trained in suspect apprehension. He has multiple arrests, over 60 during the course of his career. He's worked with the postal inspector on several occasions, a two-week interdiction program in 2012 where he seized over $100,000 in currency, which was related to narcotics. He is certified by United Police Work Dog Association and the National Association of Police Work Dogs. He's a dual-purpose, as I stated. You know, we're retiring caster. He's been with us since I said 2011. Unfortunately, as they get up in age and as the dog starts to reach the end of its working life cycle, you know, we hate to see him go as partners, but I know Kevin is excited because caster will be retired and living with him as his personal dog as of last board meeting. So we wanted to bring caster in and just kind of present him to everybody and do a ceremonial removing of his badge, please. Thank you.[283.12][283.12](Applause).
The next item we have tonight is presentation. I'd like to ask Captain Roy Sisk, Detective Sergeant Darren Snyder, Detective Danielle Helms, Detective Stacy Cooper, and Detective Chris Jury to come up, please. And I'd also like to ask Heather Johnson, who's the Director of Operations for Pat's Place. Oh, you came up. Thank you. Thank you. So what I'd like to do is to read this proclamation. It's a proclamation in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have a safe, stable, and nurturing home to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect and strengthening our community is our responsibility, and whereas communities that provide parents with the support and resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children's development ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organization, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, I, Paul Bailey, Mayor of the Town of Matthews, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Matthews, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Matthews and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Matthews to be affixed this 8th day of April, 2019.[481.34][481.34](Applause). If you could tell us a little bit about Pat's Place?
Sure. Pat's Place is a child advocacy center. We have about 17 staff that work to coordinate investigation and response of some of the most complex and serious child abuse allegations and crimes in Mecklenburg County. We serve about 675 children a year when they come to our center. It's a child-friendly center where they have a comfort dog that greets them to help them through the process. They meet with forensic interviewers, mental health professionals, and family advocates that wrap around the entire family to help them through the trauma and lead to some hope and healing. So thank you very much.
video, and I'll call on our Communications Director, Maureen Keith.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're pleased to present our State of the Town video address. This is a project that we've been working on for several months now, and you'll see in a few minutes, it's a look back at last year, 2018, and then a look ahead as to what's to come in 2019 here in Matthews. So I'd like to thank the mayor for his vision for this project, and also like to thank Steve Huff, the videographer that we worked with on this project, who did a great job. So I will play it now.
Hi, I'm Paul Bailey, and it is an honor to serve you as the mayor of Matthews. 2018 was a great year for Matthews, full of accomplishments and continued excellent service to our citizens. Consistently ranked as one of North Carolina's safest places to live and one of the best places to raise a family, Matthews is a place people want to live, work, and visit. Since 2010, the population of Matthews has grown by 18%. Today, Matthews is home to over 32,000 residents, and more people are moving here every day. As Matthews has grown, our downtown has also developed into a bustling destination with popular dining options, shopping, and nightlife. We are grateful to the many private business owners who believed in Matthews, choose to do business here, and continue to invest in the future of our community. Population growth does, however, bring more traffic, and the town remains committed to working closely with the North Carolina Department of Transportation as several major road projects are ahead for Matthews. One of these projects is making improvements to I-485 with the addition of express lanes and an interchange at Weddington Road. This project is expected to begin this summer. NCDOT will also be widening Independence Boulevard through Matthews and adding express lanes. This project could begin as early as this year. McKee Road will be extended from its current endpoint at Pleasant Plains Road through to John Street. Construction is scheduled to begin in 2020. One project that has been controversial here in Matthews is the change DOT has proposed to John Street. The Matthews Board of Commissioners does not support turning John Street into a four-lane road through the heart of Matthews. We formed a working group to develop an alternative, and we are now moving forward by asking NCDOT to delay the project and reconsider the four-lane design. Looking ahead, NCDOT will also be completing the South Trade Street widening near the Mara baseball fields. This project will include a pedestrian tunnel and greenway connection. For a list of all current and future transportation projects, please visit our website. Our growing town is also fortunate to be managed by a great team of talented staff members who go above and beyond every day to serve the community. Along with the Board of Commissioners, they are committed to maintaining excellent service to the residents of Matthews. There have been many changes to the police department over the past year, including the introduction of a motorcycle unit. The motor unit officers are tasked with traffic enforcement, crash investigations, traffic control, and special escorts. 2018 also saw a 20% reduction in burglaries and a 16% reduction in car break-ins. Matthews Fire and EMS responded to nearly 4,000 calls for service in 2018, a 15% increase over the previous year. To best meet these needs, the department transitioned to a 24-hour paid staffing model at the end of this past year. Now, career and volunteer firefighters and EMTs work side by side around the clock, ensuring sufficient coverage. To accomplish this change, the fire department hired 10 new firefighters. We also added a new fire engine to our fleet in 2018. Matthews was hit with some severe weather in the fall of 2018, and our emergency services personnel did a great job responding. Power outages, down trees, flooded roads were quickly attended to by our police, fire and EMS, and Public Works Department, and we were grateful for their service. But Matthews is not just about work. We also strive to provide opportunities for our residents to come out and play. In August, we built ground on a new 10-acre park along Rice Road. The park is now open and features a natural surface walking trail, playground, and picnic areas. We continued our focus on expanding our greenway trails and multi-use paths. Our citizens love walking and biking through town, and we want to expand these trails and improve connectivity. The Board of Commissioners has approved funding for pedestrian improvements to be included with the US-74 widening project, making it easier for residents to walk or bike through town and improving connectivity across US-74. One of the most popular events of the year, Matthews Alive, was a great success again in 2018, raising over $144,000 for local nonprofits. Matthews Alive brings nearly 150,000 people to Matthews every year, and it's a great chance to showcase our wonderful town. Other special events like Positively Matthews, Beach Fest, First Thursday, and the ever-popular Food Truck Friday and Concert Series bring our community together and are part of what makes Matthews so special. The final issue I'd like to touch on during my time with you today is a lack of space in our schools here in Matthews. While we are fortunate to have great schools, the problem is there are too few of them. To help address this important issue, we've established the Matthews Committee on Education, which will act in an advisory capacity to the town board. Working together with CMS, charter schools, private schools, and homeschools in Matthews, the committee's mission is to promote a strong, healthy, and cooperative relationship amongst these education options, and to promote equal opportunities for all students in Matthews. In closing, I'd like to invite you to join me for Breakfast with the Mayor on the first Saturday of every month at Mickey's Restaurant in Matthews Festival Shopping Center. We also have a monthly coffee with a Commissioner event. Please visit our website for more details on the time and location of these events. You can also follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for the latest town news and updates. Be sure you're signed up for alerts through our website. Thank you for allowing me to provide you an update on the state of Matthews. I wish you all a wonderful year ahead.[1098.08][1098.08](Music).
So are you going to say anything else? (Laughter).
She's so excited about it. Good job.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment, and we don't have anyone who's signed up for that this evening, so we'll move on to public hearing. Do I have a motion to recess a regular meeting for public hearing on applications to amend the Unified Development ordinance of the Town of Matthews?
Settle.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The town board is now in a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Board, and Mary Jo Golins, if you will, please introduce the members of the planning board.
Yes, I will, Mayor. Good evening. First in the front row is Larry Whitley, Natasha Edwards, Carrie Lamson, our Chair, David Weezer, our newest member, Jonathan Clayton, and Scott Query.
Okay, thank you. So the first item, 10A, is zoning application 2019-694 for Discount Tire. This is to change the zoning from B1CD to BHCD on that certain property designated as 1625 Windsor Square Drive and being further designated as tax parcel 193-231-25. Mary Jo?
Thank you for introducing that. As you stated, this is at the corner of Windsor Square and Independence Point Drive and Independence Point Parkway. It is a 1.87, 887-acre property. The current owner, FG LW Properties, and Discount Tires are submitting the application for the rezoning. It is vacant restaurant, and the applicant wishes to modify the zoning conditions to replace the existing structure with a Discount Tire. Here's an overview of the area. Again, another view from the air, and this is the stake. This is the view from Independence Boulevard, not Independence Point Parkway. That's the front. This is Independence Boulevard here. And this is the side view from Windsor Square. Chick-fil-A is over here on the right, and this is one of the access points to the property. A note, the property owners and applicant have been notified of the potential widening of 74 and how it will impact their property. This is the proposed new right-of-way. They have provided a site plan. They will be removing the existing structure and placing the new structure behind the transitional right-of-way, back 40 feet to the setback, and building a new building and reconfiguring the parking at the facility. Here are the proposed elevations. This west elevation will be seen from Independence Point Parkway. The east elevation is Independence Boulevard view, and that is where they will have their display area, their seating area for their clientele. This north elevation will be seen from the Red Lobster on the other side of the property, and this elevation with the garages will be facing Windsor Square Drive. Some of the proposed conditions, the current existing conditions on the property, the only use allowed is for a restaurant with drive-through. All other uses were not permitted on this property, and a maximum of 6,500 square foot building space. The applicant proposes to permit only the use of sale of passenger car and light truck tires and wheels and any incidental accessories associated with that use. New tires and disposable tires will be stored inside. There will be no outside storage. They will be constructing an 8,500-square-foot building. The trees will be evaluated that are on site. Any trees that are not healthy along Independence Boulevard or Independence Point Parkway will be replaced. They are going to install sidewalks and streetscapes along Windsor Square Drive. Screening, landscaping, lighting, and signage will all meet Matthews Unified Development There is very little tree canopy on the property currently. They will increase the tree canopy by placing all the street trees and the other trees that they proposed. The existing stormwater BMP pond will be used and has already been, I believe it's conceptually determined that it meets their requirements. The land use, there's retail uses are appropriate along US-74 corridor. The request is consistent with nearby uses and with recommendations within the land use plan. And the only recommendations from planning staff is, you know, the current elevations that you see this evening are the most recent. They did change some of the elevations from when our initial comments came through. So these are upgraded from what they initially proposed. The originals did not have any brick. It was not stoned, and it was just a straight roof line. So we did ask them to update the elevations, and this is what they presented. And we also suggest that a note be added to the conditions that Windsor Square Drive may be relocated based on town and DOT approval if it needs to be during the widening of 74.
Any questions for Mary Jo? Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Jo, from a zoning standpoint and thought of an additional conditional zoning item, are we within our right to ask that no cars be left overnight outside of the parking lot if someone can't pick up their car in the evening? We can require them to store it inside the bay? And in addition to that, other than tires, any incidentals that may be a quote-unquote byproduct of their day-to-day operation? I just don't want things accumulating outside, like cars and tools and floor jacks.
Yeah. I think they would have to agree to that. Am I correct?
They would, but I have a caveat to that. I think outside storage you could prohibit, or with their consent. Parking or cars there outside at night, I'm not sure that there is a zoning purpose for that under the statute, you know, your authority. That may be going just a little bit beyond your authority, but I do think there's no question that you could get an agreement with them dealing with outside storage.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Jo, when Independence is widened, what is going to become of the Windsor Drive stoplight?
If I remember correctly on the plans, that is going away because it's going to be a right-in, right-out only at that intersection.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I note that Public Works mentions that they should, they would suggest consider flipping the building to have the waiting area off of a smaller road like Windsor Square Drive. I think that's a very good suggestion. The foresight of having Independence Point Parkway and Northeast Parkway is so that all businesses can now access a more local road, and it will only benefit them because of it. So I would urge the petitioner to consider adjusting the building for what's going to happen in the future rather than what it is today.
We did discuss that with them, and I think the engineer can speak to that further this evening. The waiting area is going to be right in here, and we suggested moving it over there because of crosswalk. We feel this would be a safer cross area for pedestrians to go over to Chick-fil-A or other services on the other plaza. However, they did speak to us and said that for engineering purposes and Discount Tire felt comfortable where it is. We also did say that, you know, the access is going to be over here in the future with 74. So that, like I said, we did suggest that, and they did stay with what they had already planned. But you can talk to them about that.
Mr. Urban?
Mary Jo, what other suggestions did the planning staff have? Because what you just said was very accurate, that Independence Point Parkway is going to be their front door.
Mm-hmm. As in, what are their suggestions?
Well, it seems to me that normally staff likes to push the building up close to the street. Well, now, if you flip things around, the parking's in front of the building, and Independence Point Parkway becomes the minor arterial.
Yes, yeah. We, you know, that was the only suggestion we had, if they, you know, put the face, flip it over this way. Because the pond is already there, unless they go and bury it, it's difficult to move the building much closer to that area.
Mr. Men?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Jo, I'd just like to echo what some of the others have said. It makes much more sense to me that since they're tearing the building down, that we think a little forward and have that front facing towards Independence Point Parkway. I understand they may want some signage on the back of the building. I'd rather make an exception on that than have it facing the building. rather make an exception on that than have it facing, um, the building. That's not gonna be attractive for Independence Point Parkway in the future.
Okay.
Okay. I've, I've got a question. I think the petitioner probably needs to, to come up. But let me ask you, just from a logic perspective. The notes in the drawing talk about the tree review and replacing anything that needs, that's, it's in bad shape. But the tree save says they have to, it requires 12% tree canopy preservation. So I'd like to see 100% preservation in that note. I know what the ordinance says, but that's not what it sounds like they're committing to, so.
They, they are going, there was one tree that staff identified we thought was dead out on Independence Boulevard. So they are going to review each one of those trees to verify that they're healthy and with our arborist and with work with us. So they will technically be saving up to 100% of the, of what is existing out there. But we just know that there's at least one tree that is not, it's not healthy at all.
Okay. If I remember correctly, all those are spaced appropriately, so the absence of a tree would look rather peculiar.
Yes, yes. Mm-hmm. They would replant. They've committed to us to replant.
Yep. Okay. Is a petitioner, well, before we do that, excuse me. Is there any question from the planning and zoning board? Okay.
Yeah, petitioner's here.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, as well as the planning board. Um, I'm Suzanne Todd. I'm an attorney with Johnson, Nelson, Hord. My address is 1065 East, East Morehead Street, Charlotte. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant for this rezoning, which is, uh, Discount Tire Company. With me today is Daniel Nelms. He's with, also with Discount Tire, as well as Adam Esnix, who is with Kim Lee Horn, who is our site engineer. Um, I think staff did a great job of the presentation. Obviously, you've seen the site plan as well as the elevation, so I was just gonna spend a couple minutes telling you about Discount Tire. Um, Discount Tire is the most successful, uh, fastest-growing independent, um, tire retailer in the United States. They currently have over 1,000 locations nationwide. Uh, they only sell and service wheels and tires. Um, they don't perform any mechanical work such as, uh, battery changes or shocks or brakes. Um, and they don't handle any hazardous materials or waste such as oil or antifreeze. Um, all their employees begin at, uh, entry level and learn the business growing up through the, through the company. Uh, it's very family-oriented with most employees located within the area, uh, the community that, um, in which their store is located. Uh, their operational hours are eight to six, Monday through Friday, uh, eight to five on Saturdays, and they're closed on Sundays. This is intentional because, again, it's family-oriented and the employees need that time evenings and, uh, weekend, Sundays to spend with their families. Um, the closest Discount Tire store is on, off Independence Boulevard. They're near Sardis Road. Um, that store will be removed by DOT for, as part of the, um, Sardis Road flyover. So, uh, that's why Discount Tire is here looking for a new location to service this community. Um, the plan, as, uh, Mary Jo mentioned, is to demolish the vacant restaurant that's currently located on the site. The, the new store is gonna have a brick exterior. Um, as shown on the plans, and a more modern roof line is requested by staff. Um, we did hold our community meeting at Central Piedmont Community College, uh, the Levine Campus. Unfortunately, we had no attendees. It's kinda like holding a, having a party and nobody comes. Um, we did receive a call from, uh, Mr. Lenny Sammett, who is the owner of the adjacent Red Lobster property. And he had two requests from us. Number one, uh, brick on the exterior, which we were able to accommodate. And the second one was he asked that the dumpster be relocated. Um, it is currently adjacent to his property, and he did not want patrons driving in seeing a dumpster, um, when they pulled into the parking lot. Unfortunately, this is a, uh, the site fronts, uh, three road rightaways, and you can't have a dumpster up against a road rightofway, so it's really the only location to put it, um, adjacent to his property line. Uh, we have explained to Mr. Sammett that, in fact, that is a, you know, the dumpsters will be located in an enclosure. And as you can see from the elevations, it's, uh, attractive and accommodates and, and you sort of mimics the, the coloring of the, um, the Discount Tire store itself. Uh, and that will be the back of the enclosure is what's going to be abutting, um, his parking lot. There's also sort of a, a strip of grass between the two parking lots, and there's trees planted there, um, which will further, you know, help obscure, um, the, the dumpster, the, basically the enclosure, the rear of the enclosure from his parking lot as well. So I just wanted to be, have you folks be aware of his input, um, if you should receive further comment. Um, that is pretty much it. We are here available, uh, to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Query?
Probably what was expected. I don't believe you had 50% brick at this time. Excuse me. 50% brick. And the back of your dumpster, could that be, could the dumpster unit be built out of brick so it would be more appropriate for a view from outside?
Uh, the brick is, is, the dumpster is currently, the enclosure's not proposed at this time for brick, but I can certainly take that back to the client.
Okay. I, I would like to see that because I do understand the, uh, the, the neighbor's concern about people coming in there. And I think y'all would be concerned about them coming in when it, that becomes the front of your building anyhow, more or less. Uh, it would be better for that, too. And also the 50% brick, that's something I kinda require for me to support it, so I'd like for you to take a hard look at that.
The, having brick?
50% brick.
50% brick.
I don't know what the, if I guessed that, you may have 25% now. And then Stucko?
Do you know what percentage? We'll look into that.
Okay.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes, are, are all the discarded tires, uh, in, uh, contained within the dumpster? And how often are they picked up?
Daniel, yes, please.
My name is Daniel Nelms with Discount Tire. All of our scrap tires, we have a room inside the building. They go inside that room, so you'll never see them. They're not stored off-site at all, outside. Uh, we actually have a licensed scrap hauler come pick those up, and those get recycled. They turn into playground material, rubber mulch, things like that. We have none of that stored. And the trash enclosure and the dumpster, it's all inside the building.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask my question about the tree canopy. Uh, just to eliminate any confusion, uh, can we change that 12% to 100% preservation? Because you've said that you're gonna preserve the trees that are on site. I'll even go with 98 if we gotta do that, but.
I will, I will, uh, raise that with, uh, with Discount Tire and see what we can do. I think the intention was to keep those trees that are there.
Okay. I'd just like for the notes to be consistent. Mr. Mint?
Hi, I just wanted to ask your, um, consideration for flipping the building and considering Independence Point Parkway as your main view of the building, because that is gonna become your view while your shop is hopefully still there. Um, I don't want the side of the building or back of the building facing what's gonna become a collector road and have all of your traffic going in and out of there, not Independence Boulevard.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna let Adam speak to, uh, to the, the issues that we found with, um, trying to flip the building.
There's no issue. It's just merely a perspective from right now, all the businesses are all facing Independence, so.
We can't, could you skip?
Excuse me, sorry. Um, our client made the point that right now, all of the existing businesses are facing Independence, and so that was just their hesitation to do something different. But understand that from the perspective, looking at it from the future, um, there's their, you know, potentially some wisdom there, so we'll bring that back and discuss with them and, and mention that the desire is to plan for what's gonna be in the future and not necessarily what is the existing condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Um, okay, I wanna echo a few things. I think Commissioner Mint was right on the spot. Um, I'm surprised that Commissioner Query didn't ask for 100% brick because that's what he asked of Red Lobster.
Yeah, it did.
And Red Lobster politely accommodated them. Um, I would go as far as saying that, granted, Discount Store, Tire Stores are great, but so is the town of Matthews, and we work really, really hard, um, to accommodate what we're trying to look for here. And I think some of the points that planning staff pointed out are spot-on. Um, Independence Point Parkway will become your front door. So, right now, I find the design unacceptable from the grounds that, you know, you can do some things architecturally and still not jeopardize your viewed Independence Boulevard, if so you so desire. Um, there's something called the difference between a figurative front and a literal front. And your literal front right now is facing Independence Point, is facing 74, but you could have a figurative front facing Independence Point Parkway. And so someone driving along there is gonna see it and think that is the entry. If you look at Red Lobster right now, it is articulated as such that that back looks like the front. Um, and I think you could probably design it in such a manner that if you needed to flip the, the workings of this building inside out, you could do it down the road. Um, I, I just, it, it's a tire store to me. It's bland, it's boring, um, and it does nothing to, uh, remediate the pedestrians hopefully along that corridor someday. The other thing I'd like to see, you're talking about, everybody's talking about flipping the, the entry aspect of it. I'd like to see it flipped the other way and place the garage bays on the backside of the building facing a heavier screened lot line between it and Red Lobster. And again, my reason is to Mary Jo's comment, is the pedestrians walking along Windsor Square Drive, coming out of Chick-fil-A, et cetera, are gonna look right into your bay doors, and, um, that doesn't seem very appealing to me at all. So I, at this stage in the game, I, personally, I'm only one of seven, but I think you got a lot of work to do to respond to the site conditions and what this town has been trying to do for 20 years to reorient towards Independence Point Parkway. But we'd love to have you here, but we need to be respectful of what we're trying to achieve.
Any other questions from the town board? Mr. Query?
Like to address the brick parts. I don't wanna make, Mr. Urban, think I've changed my way of thinking about brick. It, it would be preferable to be total brick that, in that instance, and that is what Red Lobster did for us. And I think it became a good-looking building. Uh, also, I agree with Commissioner Urban and Commissioner DeMint that you need to take a look at what's really the front of the building in the future. Unless you're planning on just a five-year building, and then I wouldn't think that's it either. The, uh, Independence Point will become your main one, and I'm not sure you wouldn't be better to move it back from the high, Independence Boulevard a little bit. Cause you're, you're actually sitting right on your border where you go. It's like it is in Independence, and it's, it's not gonna be easy to flip that once you have to, to change it around. Thank you.
Any questions from the planning and zoning board? Okay. Seen no additional questions. Um, application 2019-694 will go to the planning and zoning board for consideration on April 23rd, uh, fourth Tuesday of the month, and then has the, uh, ability to come back to this board on May 13th?
13th.
Okay. All right.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Public comment.
Oh.
Public input.
Okay. Okay, so is there anyone who would like to speak in support or opposition to this particular zoning application 2019-694? Anyone wanna speak in support or opposition? Okay. Seen none. Um, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is item 10B zoning application 2019-695 Viking Partners text amendment. And this is to change the text in the UDO to change the table of dimensional standards regarding side yards in the B1 SCD district. Mary Jo?
Thank you. Again, Mayor. Um, as you so noted, Viking Partners, um, built, approved, the Academy Sports was approved in 2017-659 to add on, um, it removed the old HH Gregg Building and that's at the Matthews Corner Shopping Center and added on the Academy Sports. Um, they wish to subdivide their property, uh, their building from the attached buildings that exist at that shopping center. Um, the requested text would add footnote 18 to section 155-604-3 of the Table of Dimensional Standards in Matthews UDO. Uh, the note would read, "Side yards are not required along the interior lot lines of parcels or lots created as part of the shopping, a shopping center." Um, the text change would be available to any other business within that zoning district. There are similar footnotes within our dimensional, dimensional standard tables, um, in the B1 neighborhood businesses, the, the highway businesses, the high-rise businesses, and the light industrials. So they're asking to have this added. This is their, uh, request. And... So here's the Table of Dimensional Standards. It's in our Unified Development ordinance, and they would add a footnote here, number 18, and then it'd be referenced down here. They literally want to be able to take, um, the shopping center and, and split off the Academy Sports, just draw a line around Academy Sports, meet the rest of the standards that are required. Okay?
Okay. Mr. Melton?
I've read this and had hoped, sitting through this, I would understand exactly what we're being asked to do.
Okay.
Are they gonna sublet the physical occupancy that's been built or allow, sublet the land and allow something else to be built onto it?
No. Um, they are going to, um, let me pull Google. Or Polaris, Polaris, please. Um, I'll be able to show you better once Polaris is up. Um, there are other situations within Matthews that this is, occurs where there's a sliver of property that goes out to the street and then it bows out as a, that's, that's good, thank you. Um... Sorry, I got lost in town. So here's Target. This is the Target Shopping Center. And see this property line here? This is Fun Fab, the furniture store here. Um, and then these, there's Kirkland's at the corner here. So, but this is what they want to be able to do. These are old subdivisions or condo plats that have been on record for a long time. They would not be allowed currently in our ordinance in this, uh, the way it stands. So this is what they want to do. Same thing over here. This is Harris Teeter. This is Stein Mart. That, they did that also there. So they want to, this is Academy Sports here. They want to cut right here, come back to the back of the property, and then come out.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes, Mary Jo, are there any unintended consequences? I mean, it looks like, yeah, that looks okay, but, uh, is there any, anything detrimental to the town that this would, might be for, could foresee?
I don't believe so. Um, we discussed this at staff level quite a bit when they first came to us. Um, there, you know, there's still always a cross-access agreement and cross-parking agreements in these subdivision, in these shopping centers. So, um, as long as they have, uh, property that touches the... property that touches the, at least one road, so that they always have access to their land and they're not landlocked, I, you know, it's, staff supports us.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if I understand this correctly, it's essentially, in my layman terms, it's a zero lot line internal to a shopping center, given the fact that they're sharing an alleyway or driveway and parking lot, right? Zero lot line and two walls connect?
Correct.
Thank you.
You've got that down. Good.
Mr. Query?
I've got one question, is how, how does that affect the signage for that whole shopping center when they have a different parcel?
It doesn't. They have a master sign plan for the development. So, the development is listed as a development, and just like Matthews Festival has a master sign plan, and it doesn't matter how many individual condos or how, how often they are split, but that is part of their development. It was developed as a shopping center, and that's how their master sign plan was approved.
But it concerns me when they pull one portion out of it, like they're doing that.
They wouldn't be able to change it. I mean, they'd have, the, if they wanted to, let me think, if they, they would only be allowed 80 square feet for any individual business if they wanted to separate out of the master sign plan.
Mr. Buckley?
Perhaps I can help with this. Creating a new lot line doesn't change the zoning district. That doesn't change at all. So, that entire district, regardless, the fact that they're putting in the new property line doesn't change the zoning district. It's just creating an app parcel, and that app parcel is still in that zoning district. The district has already got a development plan on it. So, really, what this does is allow a new app parcel to be created and nothing else.
Thank you.
Mr. DeMent?
Just want, my question is similar to Commissioner Higgins'. It says what the intended effect of this request is, but I'm more concerned with a text amendment change of what the unintended consequences are, because it's not just this one parcel. It's any parcel that falls into...
The B1 SCD. So, those are all our shopping centers.
So, does this affect, like, one that you showed was where Harris Teeter, Hobby Lobby, not Hobby Lobby, Harris Teeter, and, yeah, right in there?
Right there.
That parking lot is so horrible. It's managed by different people. Could that be an unintended consequence, that if we have different property lines, could different developers in the future have it, then they have different visions for the parking? Will they always have come, have to come back to us for those plans? What can happen, thinking forward to other places, not just Academy?
Okay. So, that shopping center would not meet our parking standards today, the Matthews Festival. Academy Sports, that Matthews Corner Shopping Center does meet our standards today.
And you mentioned Target?
Yes.
Where the furniture store Kirkland's is, and you said that wouldn't meet today's standards either.
No.
Not the parking, but...
Yes, the subdivision.
The subdivision.
Yes.
So, if we had a reason that it wouldn't meet our standards, why are we saying that it's okay to go back and change this for...
I'm not understanding your question. I'm sorry. The...
What would be the difference in Academy doing it and Target?
Well, Target, we don't know when that was done. I mean, we don't know how that was approved, okay? So, it's, it's an older shopping center. It would make it conforming now. This, this change, it would make it conforming. Right now, it's non-conforming. It's legal non-conforming.
Would zero lot lines for these shopping centers have anything to do with eliminating any green space or the trees that we're requiring in parking places?
No, because it's only internal to the...
Just internal?
Only internal. We, they still have to meet the lot line, the requirements externally. Yes.
If I may interject again, from a historical standpoint, Target and also the Matthews Festival, those were created under the old, old zoning district called Conditional District.
Okay.
That district doesn't exist anymore. We now have the B1 SCD, and so it's not going to change anything. And as she said, the only thing it will do will be to make the Target Shopping Center and the Matthews Festival with a similar situation of an app parcel conform to the current zoning. But just because a, a new parcel is created, still doesn't change the zoning and the performance standards under that zoning on that app parcel, or any other app parcel. The zoning is still on top of that old two parcels. And the zoning's not changing, or the conditions are not changing. You're not, they're not going to be entitled to any more parking or any more changes in the landscapes or anything, nothing like that. That's not affected by this. It's just it would allow a zero lot line so that you could create an app parcel with an existing building.
Mr. Urban?
All right, let me, Scott Query could probably answer this one. First of all, is there any reason that you can't, you know, we have special use permits. You know, there's certain, in your tables, don't we have those, if you're permitted, the P is in the table?
Oh, it's not special use. It's permitted by right.
Permit, okay. Well, I guess the question is, because to Barbara's point, you open up Pandora's Box, it applies to everybody. So, I'm going to bring the building code into this, okay? A lot line slicing through between two buildings sets up a predicament for fire ratings in the International Fire Code and the building code. So, let's say, hypothetically, that you allow this to take place, and you slice a line through these shopping centers, and Parcel A, who has no play in this, has in the back of his property a jog, and it's a restaurant with a lot of windows, and it's five foot off that property, off of the new property line. Well, now, he's in violation of the building code, and he may have to sprinkle or fire rate that opening, whereas the guy that's benefiting from this line doesn't have to do anything. So, what you're doing is, down the road, Scott, you correct me if I'm wrong, down the road, you are putting a burden on somebody else unintentionally.
Okay.
From a building code standpoint?
From a building code standpoint.
I mean, I'd have, I'd have to look at every single scenario, and I know that Academy Sports, where slicing through is probably a CMU wall, it's probably rated for three hours, but there are shopping centers that extend beyond one another, and if that extension extends beyond another, and that wall is not rated, or it's within three feet, or five feet, or 10 feet per code, it has to meet a certain rating. When you put that line in there, you just created an enforceable line by the building code. There's my unintended consequence.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm wondering, if it's a, if you can create in a mechanism, it looks at these on a case-by-case basis, maybe you could do something, but I'm just, that's, that's where I see.
Mary Jo, in the note that, well, first, in the original zoning application, this was for B1 SCD for Shopping Center District.
Yes.
And in the notes, it actually applies to B1 neighborhood business, BH highway business, B3 high-rise business, I1 light industrial as well. And when I went into the UDO, the note is, that's being asked for, is applicable to shopping centers, and that's all they specified. So, first off, I assume from that, that the minimum side yard interior is, can be zero only for shopping centers. Is that correct?
That's what they're asking for.
Regardless of the zoning that they're in.
Correct, across there, correct.
All right. So, I went to the Shopping Center District, I looked at that, but when I go back to the definitions for the UDO, there's no definition for shopping center. So, what do you do in all those other zonings? When it says shopping center, how do you interpret what is a shopping center?
I, is, it might not be under our definitions, but it probably is under Chapter 5, where it talks about the zoning districts. I think that would clarify what a B1 SCD is.
Okay, well, maybe we can sit down and do, I just, I couldn't get all the, all the different zonings connected together and be comfortable that, you know, a shopping center in an I1 is a shopping center. It's clearly defined.
In my note, when, in my memo, I said, you know, there's footnotes that are similar to this dimensional standard in those other classifica, in those other zoning districts. So, this would apply, you know, to the B1 SCD, but there are similar type of notes in an I1 and the B3, which the only B3 we have is the Marriott Hotel in Matthews.
Yeah.
So...
I understand. I'm just thinking about, again, the change for all of these and then potential future rezonings.
The applicant is here too this evening also.
Okay. Well, let's see if the Planning and Zoning Boards has any questions for you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. All right.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Board of Commissioners. I'm Keith McVane with Moore Van Allen. We're located at 100 North Tryon Street, Suite 4700, Charlotte, North Carolina. I also want to say hello to the Board, Planning Board members. I think Mary Jo has done a great job explaining what the text amendment is trying to do. It, a couple of points. It does allow Matthews Corners to subdivide the Academy Sports Building. A lot of times, owners or tenants within shopping centers, instead of leasing their property, like to own their property. That's what Academy Sports would like to do in this case. Shopping centers, when they're usually developed, or when they are developed, have reciprocal operating agreements for cross-access easement and maintenance to make sure, even when you subdivide a property in a shopping center, there's still a reciprocal operating agreement that overlays the whole shopping center that requires each owner of a lot, even, or, or tenant, to be part of the agreement and maintain their property or the parking lot. So, that deals with the cross-access and other matters. In terms of the amendment, the only thing it does do is eliminate a side yard on the interior of a lot. You can already create lots in a shopping center. It's just if I did create a lot for this site, I would have to have a 25-foot side yard. This just eliminates that on the interior. Not, I already have the right to create the lot. It eliminates an interior yard, which is not unusual, as Mary Jo pointed out, had been done in the past, and is not unusual in shopping centers throughout the county to have parcels with zero lot lines. And as Mary Jo pointed out, or the staff pointed out in their report, you have four other districts that currently allow the same thing, allow you to create a, a lot with no interior side yard, a zero lot line, as Commissioner Miller mentioned. In terms of building code, Commissioner Urban is correct. We are subject to the building code. Whenever you do draw a property line through a building like that, it has to comply with the building code. And the building code looks at the distance from the proposed, from the property line to the proposed building, and then regulates openings or the construction type, and they will have to comply with that as part of this. Shopping centers, if they're going to do this, they'll know that upfront, and they'll have to build accordingly, or they won't be able to divide the property, because they won't be able, even though the ordinance, zoning ordinance may allow them to have a zero lot line, if the wall wasn't built to meet building code, then they won't be able to subdivide the property. So, you have to have both pieces in order to, to divide the property. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions? Mr. Urban?
Look, Keith, going back to my point, though, is what happens, what's the unintended consequence, that there is a shopping center, someone runs a line through there, and it affects Tenant A, who, who has openings, or has a wall that's not rated and stuff like that? I mean, you know, they're sort of subject at the whim of the person dividing it.
Well, because it is a shopping center typically, like, the current shopping center's in the ownership of Viking, Viking Partners. So, they have control, and they, they now know that, or they knew going in, when Academy started building, that they would like to, or there was an option to build a wall, or build, put a property line in between. So, they know that both tenants that'll be on, both Academy Sports, and I don't know who the other tenant is on the other side, are, will have, are subject to the building code. So, they've now made sure those, both those walls meet building code. There is never going to be a, on an interior lot line of a shopping center, it's always going to be the original owner in, in control of drawing that line initially. So, there won't be, the scenario you're describing is, I, shouldn't happen, because it's always one owner at the time of, the parcel being subdivided with buildings already in place. It's not like I'm creating a line next to somebody that wasn't part of my shopping center I never had control of.
Well, I, I hope that's the case, but it seems like every day, we're getting snagged on that. I mean, we're, we're getting, you know, Park Road Shopping Center, for example, it's so old, and every time someone does something new, it's a new nuance, and Mecklenburg County's coming down on us. I, I get it, and the reality is that Viking, actually, if it has a tenant, they can literally say, well, we're putting a line here, and you're in violation, and by our contract, you need to bring it up to speed. So, I'm willing to go along with this. I just know that there's, there is the potential of an unintended consequence on older centers, but barring the argument that if a center is owned by one sole entity, it should, it should never be a problem. I'll, I'll buy that argument for now.
Okay, thank you. Again, on the exterior, we have to comply with both rear yards, side yards, and setbacks. So, wherever the exterior property line of the development, as Mary Jo mentioned, we still have to comply with the requirements of the district for, for setbacks and yards.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a point, a point of clarification from my own benefit. This doesn't require you to do zero lot lines. This just allows you, if it, if there's an existing occupancy, like Stein Mart, for example, this just allows you, if you meet that criteria of having a firewall, then you can go to a zero lot line. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it's a voluntary option. It doesn't have to be done, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Board?
I've got one more question.
Mr. Query?
Yeah, and it's along the same line, and I understand what you're saying. My, my concern is, is how do we know that when that building was built, that it was considered to be divided off and was not just a common wall between the two?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think that's, I mean, it's, well, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I think it's, it's the Building Standards Department issue, and, and it's something the property owner needs to verify for building standards. If you draw that property line, does it meet fire code? And, you know, we ran into the problem, and part of my, when we were doing residential development, I was at the Planning Department in the City of Charlotte. Somebody built a condominium, and then they wanted to convert it into a townhouse. Well, they wanted to draw a property line between the two units, and before we would let them do that, we would need something from Building Standards that said, that town home now had, or had a two-hour wall. So, we, if you couldn't get that proof, and somebody would have to go in and do, you know, look at the walls and look at the sheet rock, and certify that it was a two-hour wall, otherwise, we couldn't allow the subdivision of the parcel. So, same thing here. If you're trying to do it, somebody's got to prove the building standards, I can put a property line there. Or, to John's point, if I have windows, I have to start closing up windows, because I can't have openings.
All right. Are there any questions from the Planning and Zoning Board for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Commissioners.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in support or opposition to this zoning application, 2019-695? Anyone who would like to speak in support or opposition? Okay, seeing none. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their meeting on April 23rd, and can come back to this board on May 13th for consideration. Next item on the agenda is Item 10C, zoning application, 2019-696, John Kelly text amendment to change the text in the UDO to the table of allowed uses in the I1 district to allow indoor athletic activities similar to outdoor activities currently permitted. Mary Jo?
The current UDO for uses in an I1 district allows outdoor athletic or sports field facilities intended for use by teams of participants in the I1 district. It states, the use, the table of use specifically says athletic or sports fields, ball fields, in concentrations of three or more, and sim- of three or more, and similar outdoor physical recreation facilities. Um, the applicant wishes to add in there, so that the new text would read athletic or sports facilities, ball fields, and concentrations of three or more, and similar indoor or outdoor phys, physical recreation facility intended by use, for use by teams of participants. Um, included in the table of permitted uses, um, this is allowed in the RIB1, I-1, as well as the conditional zoning districts of CMF, MUD, and ENT. So, um, any change to this text would also, um, apply to these other classifications. Now, the conditional-only districts, CMF, MUD, and ENT, would have to come before this board to be approved. The I-1, those are your churches, mara ball fields, um, schools, which most of those have participation indoor currently and outdoor. Um, the B-1, um, that is in your downtown area, and some of your other, um, along Matthews, along Matthews Mid Hill Road. So, those categories would be affected by this also. Um, they, the applicants have a specific, um, you know, they want to use this so they can, um, develop a building that they're looking at. Um, I will let them speak to that if you'd like, but again, this is a complete text amendment for this line here, um, in, under recreation and entertainment uses. It would add, um, here and in, on the other zoning classifications, um, that I mentioned, and the conditional uses. So, it's not just for the, the site that the applicant is looking at, it's for all the zoning classifications that this use affects.
Any questions? Okay. Any questions from the Planning and Zoning Board?
Just a comment. This is coming to the Planning Board, Mary Jo. One, this is very similar to the conversation we just had a few moments ago, in that it affects several other particular districts that this particular applicant at the moment, I believe, is interested in.
Correct.
I'd like to make sure that the block development and design standards, and the dimensional standards that we have in both five and six, as far as uses go, that we consider all of those, including with the building structure maybe and so forth. I certainly couldn't expect to see a baseball complex with three fields meet the height limitations that's in, like industrial, for example. Yes, while we allow differences, I would like to make sure that we're prepared to have that type of conversation with staff when they come to the Planning Board on all six of the districts that are affected. Second, in this case, I'd like to make sure that I'll give a little bit more explanation on all the various allowed uses in recreation. We can have some logical conversation because there's a recreational use of all of them. It's indoor. It has the building for teams to participate. It has at least three or more entertainment areas to it. It can be considered allowed. I don't know the logic of why some things are permitted. Some things are permitted conditionally, and some have been left blank across these six districts. I think this is an opportunity to understand what was or is the logic to this, with footnotes inclusive. And you can go down and look at same references. If you look at the one that said community center recreation, racket clubs, and so forth, unless they're, uh, commercial use or non, I don't know all of the languages, but somewhere in these six or seven categories, this has been discussed, and it's either been excluded intentionally, or it's been made permissible condition.
So, those, the three that you see up there now, those are by right? When it says P, it's by right?
Yes, I understand. And I'm talking about all of the others in that category. Before we go changing just I-1, for example, since it does affect all of those other use districts, I think just want to make sure that we're prepared to be able to have a conversation and to answer questions that I will raise at planning meeting about these types of activities.
Okay. If you, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
And the third is, I'd like more than just the applicant's example of what, again, could be used, and what it could allow in the event that it gets approved. In other words, theoretically, it allows us to enclose a baseball diamond, three fields, et cetera, et cetera. What's the square footage maximums? What are the other qualities? Height-wise, we're allowed to make certain buildings based on setbacks as high as 60-foot height in certain of these districts. So, I just want to make sure we have more than one example to base a decision on that would say we should impact this, other than if we permit it conditionally. If we permit it conditionally, then we have a right to review everything anyway. And I'm much less concerned about all of those other standard areas than if we make a fine right.
Well, it would, this is, if it was permitted conditionally, it would have to be the zoning district would be a conditional district.
R-1, it's got certain activities considered recreational.
Prescribed conditions. So, it's, so it's not, it's, it's not the, it's as a prescribed condition. So, like that one down there that says Cultural Club, it has if it's four acres, if it's this, this, and this. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes. I want to make sure we understand that, because it may be a better approach than simply taking and allowing this as a by right process in this particular case. Are there ways we can address these things? And what was the logic? Why are we doing different types of activities in the recreation area? So, I have a few questions. Again, if I didn't bring all of the notes to preparation, I'm asking that we're simply able to have staff prepared and anticipating some of those types of questions, if we can talk offline.
That would be helpful if we talk offline before the meeting, so we can be prepared.
We can understand these. The question is that, that struck me as a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Jo, I think Terry makes a good, good point. I think that the example that I've seen where we've had problems is the outdoor aspect, not the indoor.
Correct.
So, um, you know, it begs to ask the question, should this say indoor, and to get rid of the outdoor as well. So, I mean, so, that's where the issues have always been.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The applicant is here too, if you would like to speak to them.
Okay. If you would like to come up. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Casey Carr, 904 Putney Court, Matthews. Um, good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Um, thank you for letting us, um, put the amendment in. Obviously, we're, we're looking to build a community center, um, indoor athletic facility within some of the existing zoning. Obviously, the indoor facility is key for us to be able to build a center that we think can be a, a good asset to the community and be a part of what the existing kind of infrastructure.
Any questions for the petitioner or applicant? Any questions from the Planning and Zoning Board? Okay. Thank you. That was easy. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support or opposition to zoning application 2019-696? Yes, sir. Come forward. State your name and address.
Rob Jasek, 3517 Lakeside Drive in Charlotte. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I am very familiar with this project, um, and I, I really feel this is gonna be a major asset for the Matthews community. Um, my son plays soccer, for example. So, soccer fields would be, um, an asset, which will be one of the things we'd be looking at here. Uh, my son plays soccer. He drives all the way to Monroe for a similar, um, a similar facility where they have an indoor soccer field there. Um, we don't have that in, in the Matthews area. Um, but the size and scale of this project, I think we have a, a lot of potential. Um, I think downtown Matthews would benefit from it as well. It'd be really close to Matthews. And the success we've seen in Matthews with the sports playx just demonstrates that, um, curricular activities like this, uh, different types of sports are a major draw, uh, for the region. And this sort of thing would draw teams, uh, both adolescents and adults, um, across the board. So, I would just like to speak in favor of this. I think an indoor facility, um, like this would be a fantastic asset for, for Matthews. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jasek. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support or opposition? Seeing none. Does the petitioner have any comment to add from the comments that were made by the public? No comments? Okay. So, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their meeting on April 23rd, and then has the, uh, ability to come back to the Town Board on May 13th. Okay. That's the end of our zoning applications. Do we have a motion to move back into regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next item is planning and development business, and since I jumped ahead and recognized the Planning Board, we will skip, uh, Item A and go to B and receive the report from the Planning Board. David?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, we had one item on our agenda. It was zoning motion 2019-1, tree text amendments to UDO. Uh, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval, finding it consistent with the UDO, and it allowed for an update to the approved tree and shrub list. And that's the end of my extensive report.
Okay. Any questions for David? Okay. Thank you, David. So, next item is, is 12C, item number one, motion 2019-1, as Dave reported, to amend the text for tree protection landscaping regulations and revise the tables for tree protection and landscaping regulations establishing the approved tree list and shrub list. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve motion 2019-1, the text amendment to the UDO table of approved tree list and shrub list per section 155.606.14, that the action as most currently amended is approved and has been found to be consistent with the Matthews land use plan, and it will be reasonable as follows. It's consistent, therefore, the updating of the approved tree and shrub list within the UDO is consistent with the goals of the adopted Matthews land use plan, since it would assist in appropriate standards to multiple land use and zoning categories, and it is also reasonable, and in the public interest to update standards in the UDO to assure the needs of the community are met.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next item on the agenda is reports from boards and committees, and I'll ask the Chair of our Appearance and Tree Committee to come forward, Debbie Foster.
Debbie Foster, 3213 Bridgemere Terrace, Matthews.
Do you have a report?
I have a report, yeah. So, I have a, actually, I have an invitation instead of a report. So, I am inviting all of you to Litter Sweep in Matthews, which just happens to be this Saturday from 8:00 until 11:00. Everybody out here is invited too, by the way. Um, and you will to meet at Stumptown Park at 8:00 and register, and we will give you everything you need. We've got gloves. We've got vests. We've got, um, those picker-upper thingies. We have the trash bags. And Ralph has identified six areas in the town of Matthews, um, that desperately need some litter picking up. So, we will send teams out there. This is a great thing for anybody to do, any age. We'll take Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, anybody else that wants to come out. So, we hope that we will see everybody there.
Very good.
We have a proclamation from our, uh, community or committee. This one here. A proclamation, planning Saturday, April 13th, 2019.
Hold up there.
It's Spring Litter Sweep Day in the Town of Matthews. So, if you'll hold this for me, so I can read the larger type on my page. Whereas the great natural beauty of the Town of Matthews and a clean environment are great sources of pride for all citizens, and whereas the general public should respect their community and help preserve the town's natural beauty by disposing trash in proper receptacles to help create safe and appealing communities, and whereas the Matthews Appearance and Tree Committee is holding a Spring Litter Sweep on Saturday, April 13th, 2019, starting at 8:00 a.m. in Stumptown Park, and whereas the committee welcomes environmentally concerned citizens to participate in the litter sweep to help clean the environment and improve the quality of life in the Town of Matthews, and whereas the committee encourages civic and professional groups, churches, schools, families, businesses, and individual citizens to participate by organizing cleanups in their neighborhoods, and whereas the committee encourages all citizens to prevent litter by disposing of their own litter safely, teaching others to avoid littering and cleaning visible litter whenever possible. Now, therefore, I, Paul Bailey, Mayor of the Town of Matthews, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Matthews, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 13th, 2019, as Spring Litter Sweep Day in the Town of Matthews, and commend its observance to all citizens. Thank you very much. And I have, Debbie's asked me if I'm gonna be there. I gotta take care of my grandkids, but I'm gonna take them out, and we're gonna pick up litter, so. Okay. The next item is a consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 14A through F. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. And there's no discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is unfinished business, Consider Facade Grant Application for 455 West Johns Street.
Do I need to remain, go back to an excusal?
Uh, yes, you do.
Okay.
Okay. So, you would like to be?
I would like to be excused because that is Mr. Tim Chevron's office, and we are doing the, the interior design work for him.
Okay. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Urban?
Make that motion. Second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Urban is now, uh, excluded from, excused, excuse me, from discussing this particular item.
And voting.
And voting. Okay.
I hope this is the last time I have to speak to you tonight.
You've done a great job.
Thank you. Um, so, this facade grant came before your board, um, on the March 15, 25th meeting, earlier this, um, past month. Um, the applicant has submitted revised colors as requested by the board. Um, so, this is what the house color will be. Um, it's called a Downing stone. Um, and then the window trim is Downing sand, and then the, um, the paint will, and door will be, um, this color, and I can't even read it on this, Roycroft Copper Red. They, um, no longer will be placing a metal roof on the building. They are going to have shingles and the Colonial Slate color. Um, and again, the owner is requesting $2,500 for the facade grants, and, um, the EDACT had approved the request with a six, eight-to-one vote.
Okay. Mr. Higgin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve facade grant request for $2,500 at 455 West Johns Street as most recently revised.
Second.
I'd like to second, I'd like to second that motion too, because I had to, that deferred till we got the colors straightened.
Okay. So, motion's been made and seconded and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to allow Mr. Urban back into the meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. A motion?
Yeah.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Urban is now participating with the board. Okay, the next item that I have is the Mayor's Report, and on, relative to John Street, we had a video earlier this evening talking about that, and I wanted to read to the board the resolution that will come before the CRTPO on the 17th at our meeting. And the resolution is, this resolution is to amend the 2018 through 2027 State Transportation Improvement Program, also known as the STIP, to redefine sections of Project U4714, East John Street, as Section AA, which will be from Trade Street to I-485, Section AB from I-485 interchange to East John Street, which is really being let under Project I-5507, and Section AC, which will be from I-485 to Wesley Chapel Stout Road, and with Section AA construction delayed until 2027, and right-of-way being delayed until 2025. So I wanted to let you know that if anybody has objections to that, we should talk about that now, otherwise, my plan would be to move forward at the CRTPO meeting supporting this resolution for the delay of John Street. Mr. Miller?
I just have a clarification question. What about in between 51 and Trade Street? Is, is that part of AA?
Yeah, the, the project actually just started slightly before Trade headed out to 485, so anything on, on John Street towards 51 was gonna remain undisturbed.
Okay.
Except for the intersection.
Intersection.
You're right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And I don't have anything else. Attorney's report?
No report, Mayor.
Town manager's report?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Motion, would you?
I have a question. For the manager.
Okay. Under the manager's report.
Yes. We were planning a town shred event for about a little more than two weeks away after Easter on a Saturday. How is that? Can you give us an update on how that's coming, or what the plans are?
The last time I talked to staff, which was probably close to a month ago, they were planning on that. I don't have, I assume it's going to occur, I can verify that and get back to the board, though.
I think, do you know? What's that?
It's scheduled for April 25, Saturday, but in conjunction with Earth Day, it's a nature day.
Right.
Behind the Matthews Community Center.
Very good. Will there be some publicity coming out so that our, our citizens will be aware of it? Now that we're wrapping up taxes, it's a good time to...
Yeah, we have to...
Put a box or two.
Destroy the evidence.
(laughing).
We have the party, and we will continue to...
I just wanted to make sure it's still in, in place. Thank you very much.
Sure.
He's dropping off that...
Mr. Melton, do you have a motion to make?
No, sir. No, I'm...
No?
Motion, would you?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good meeting.
Good job.